Today they're going to call the meeting to order. It's the Eastline Border Selectments, special meeting of January 3rd, 2024. Not a special meeting, is it? No.
No.
This is a regular meeting. All right, so it's a regular meeting of January 3rd, 2024. We've already said the Pledge of Allegiance at the previous meeting. So we'll move right into the delegations. Are there any delegations here? Please, if you would just identify yourself and your address from the podium.
I'd like to introduce myself to the board. My name is Betsy Getch. I live at 18 Hillwood Drive. I am the new president of the Samuel Smith Farmstead at 82 Plains Dam Road, which you own. And I am here to ask for your help in our continued restoration of the land and the buildings. And I just wanted to let you know where you can give us help, or we can come and talk to you about help and preservation. Okay? Thank you.
Appreciate very much what you do for the farmstead. Thank you. Any other delegations tonight? Don't see anyone else. All right, the next is to approve the regular meeting minutes of December 20th, 2023.
Move to approve the regular meeting minutes of December 20th, 2023 as submitted.
I'll second.
All right, so we have a second. Any discussion? Any necessary changes? Anyone observe? All right, if there are none, all in favor of approving the minutes of December 20th, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. The next.
Excuse me.
Yeah.
Did you ask for additional agenda and consent items?
Oh, I know. I'm sorry. I did not. Are there any?
Yes.
Oh, okay. Excuse me.
We have, I have just reviewed the list of motions tonight, for tonight, for appointments. And there are two appointments that are missing here. And I had called the office today to make sure that they were on the agenda for tonight. And those would be two appointments to, oh my gosh, out of my mind, the Ledge Light Health District. And that is to be, we could do this the next meeting, except Susan Graham, who was supposed to be appointed, is leaving for Florida, so she would not be able to get sworn in. And the other person, oh boy, I'm having a brain lapse here. Anyway, there were two. She's the one that concerns me because can she get sworn in by Zoom if she has that capability in Florida?
Well, I think she actually, I don't think she can be sworn in by Zoom. But we don't need any, we can just, we can just do that, we have a line item for appointments to boards and commissions. So we don't need to add it to the agenda.
Okay.
We can just, when we get to appointments with boards and commissions, if you want to raise that at that time, and we can, we can, we can do it. If you have, you have her information?
I do not, because I thought it was an agenda.
Address. I'll try to search it down.
Okay.
Who's the other person?
So we, so we can, so we can move forward. We don't need to add the agenda item because we already have that. But we should do the consent calendar. So let's go backwards a little bit. They were both at the same line item. We do have a consent calendar. And we have a motion to approve the consent calendar.
Move to approve the consent calendar for January 3rd, 2024 in the amount of $1,840.31.
And do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a second. Thank you. And any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? No opposed, the motion carries. Okay. So now we'll move forward again to the second part of approval of the minutes, the special meeting of December 21st, 2023. Do I hear a motion?
Did we actually approve, I don't know if we actually voted on the ones for December 20th, 2023, did we?
I don't think we did.
I don't think we did.
We didn't approve?
No, I don't think we voted on it.
Okay.
So if we could just take a vote on that, that would be good.
So it was, it was motioned and seconded.
Correct.
All in favor of approving the minutes of the December 20th, 2023 meeting, say aye.
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 Any opposed? All right, so the motion carries. The minutes are approved. Thank you for pointing that out. And so now we move on to the special meeting of December 21st, 2023.
Move to approve the special meeting minutes of December 21st, 2023 as submitted.
Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
All right, Candace seconds. All in favor, any discussion first of all? None? All in favor of approving the minutes of the special meeting of December 21st, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Being none, that motion carries. Now, I think we already did the consent calendar, correct? Did we approve that?
Yes.
All right. Okay, so now we will move on to new business, and that is appointments to boards and commissions. So we have several here tonight. And as indicated earlier, Roseanne is, or will you be doing it? We're going to add Susan Graham.
Yeah, I just, I just need to get her address.
Yeah, okay.
That's about the only thing I need to track it down.
Maybe.
I have an old address, but I don't have, I have a 47 Oswego Beach Road, but I think that's an old address.
It's on Main Street in.
Yes, down with the yellow cardboard box building.
I'm trying to find it.
Tell you what, why don't we let Jason work on that?
Okay.
You want to go through the.
And the other person is Kent Sustair.
Okay.
Okay, so we'll see if we can add them in the detail. Meanwhile. What's that?
For the yellow building?
Yeah. That sounds right. Okay, great. So we'll hang on to that, and then we'll do that.
And she's being appointed to the Ledge Light Health District?
Yes.
Good.
Health.
Okay.
District. Just serving as a member, Roseanne?
Yes, and this is a reappointment. Both of these are reappointments.
And do we know when the term would expire by any chance?
Well, wouldn't it be the, no, I'm sorry, I don't. Well, I think those, what is this, 2024? I think those are four-year terms. No, two years. They're two-year terms. Because they were, they were appointed in 2020.
Twenty, so it must be a four-year term.
Four-year term?
Yep.
Okay, so that would be the. Twenty-eight then?
Yeah, we'll see, yeah, twenty-eight.
Okay. Got it, 2028.
So they were, today is January, what, right?
Yeah. No, January 3rd.
January 3rd, we're sorry.
1-3-2028.
Right, so one, okay.
Got it, okay.
We're good?
We're good.
All right.
All right.
So.
So the appointments, move to appoint Viola Brush of 49 Spring Rock Road, Eastline, to serve as a member on the Youth Family and Human Services Commission on behalf of the Town of Eastline, with a term to expire on January 3rd, 2028.
Do I hear a second?
I'd like to second that.
We have a second. Any discussion? Being none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, motion carries.
Move to appoint Sandy Janak of 46 South Edward Road, Nyannick, to serve as an alternate member on the Planning Commission on behalf of the Town of Eastline, with a term to expire on December 6th, 2027.
Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Candace seconds. All right, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Move to appoint Stephen Rebalauski of 24 McKinnon Place, Eastline, as a member of the Board of Police Commissioners on behalf of the Town of Eastline, with a term to expire on January 3rd, 2028.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Roseanne, thank you. Any discussion? Being none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Move to appoint Joe Bergaugh of 19 Adewan Ave, Nyannick, to serve as a tree warden for the Town of Eastline, with a term to expire on January 3rd, 2028.
Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Candace. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Being none, motion carries.
Move to appoint Justin Porter of 10 Partridge Court, Eastline, to serve as a deputy tree warden for the Town of Eastline, with a term to expire on January 3rd, 2028.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Roseanne, thank you. Any discussion? Being none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Being none, motion carries.
Move to appoint John Manning of 25 Marshfield Road, Nyannick, to serve as an alternate member on the Zoning Board of Appeals on behalf of the Town of Eastline, with a term to expire on January 5th, 2026.
Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right. Any opposed? Motion carries. Now we have a choice on this next one.
Okay, so move to appoint Susan Graham of 185 Main Street, Apartment 304, to serve as a member of Ledge Light Health District on behalf of the Town of Eastline, with a term to expire on January 3rd, 2028.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Being none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Being none, motion carries.
Is Mr. Sustair's motion coming up next?
What's that?
What? Is Mr. Sustair's motion coming up next?
Yeah, he's.
Oh, I didn't have to, okay.
So he's.
There's.
I need an address.
His, okay, his formal name begins with capital letter F, period, and then it's Kent Sustair Esquire.
Let me just grab this, I'm sorry. Okay, move to appoint F. Kent Sustair of 3 Gooseberry Lane, Nyannick, to serve as a member on Ledge Light Health District for the Town of Eastline, with a term to expire on January 3rd, 2028.
Any, okay, do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Being none, thank you. Any discussion? None? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Being none, motion carries, Kent Sustair. Thank you.
So, yeah, so we have, there's, there's two, two motions. So both have applied, but we need to choose and have a vote as to who should be the alternate and who should be the full member. Okay, so this is, they're saying, yes, so this is, this is the other person.
Oh, I see.
So she gave me both, just so, depending on who, what it is, that's all. So but we need to have a discussion and then have a vote as to who should be.
So we should do that?
Yeah.
Okay, so let me just lay this out. So there are two positions on the Inland Wetlands Agency. One position is as an alternate member, and the other is as, which would, the alternate would expire January 3rd, 2028. The other position is a full member, and that would expire on January 5th, 2026. Now we have two candidates. One is Ryan Williams of 2 Barrett Drive, Nyannick. And the other is Tom Calow of 80 Grassy Hill Road, Eastline. So we need to decide which one we are going to propose for each of the positions. So I guess we should start with the full.
First of all, do we have a resume or any information about Mr. Williams?
I think there was in the packet.
I did, I'm sorry, I must have missed that.
So while people are looking at that, I also determined that on inland wetlands, just for minority representation, we have, let me see, four unaffiliated, two Republicans and one Democrat. So Mr. Calow is registered as unaffiliated, and Mr. Williams is a Democrat. So either could go as a alternate or as a member. So I just wanted to make sure that's clear for the record.
So we do have a letter from Ryan Williams, and we do have a resume of Thomas Calow. I can just paraphrase if you'd like. Should we do that for the record?
Sure, yeah.
So for Thomas Calow, this is your chairperson, he wishes to be considered as an applicant for a seat on the Inland Wetlands Commission. He is a farmer in the north end of town, and he's passionate about the environment and water supply. He's a member of the Conservation of Natural Resources for eight years. He completed the Yukon Clear Land Use Regulators Program. And he says if he's appointed, he'll, he'll be sure to make regular attendance and participation. So that's Thomas Calow. We also have a letter from Ryan Williams, and he's trying to express his interest in the Inland Wetlands Agency. He's been a resident of Eastline since 2012. He's served as a member and vice president of Oak Grove Beach Community Association, where they were involved in stewarding coastal areas and tidal marshes through implementation of best practices in beach cleaning, and volunteered with the Nyannick River Water, Watershed Coalition for healthy lawns and healthy river. He's gained knowledge of the complex environmental systems connected, and how they're connected to each other. He's eager to serve the town in a bigger way as a steward of natural resources. He views inland wetlands as a critical part of the town's land use governance and a place where science, careful attention to regulations, and the ability to digest complex information are paramount in serving the community and to a level that they deserve. So he has an interest.
Could I make a couple of comments?
Yes, please.
One way I think that could be fair to do this is to go by the date on the letter, kind of first come, first served. I don't think that's a particularly equitable way to do things, but that's one way we could approach it. The other issue that I would like to bring up is that both these men have spouses that currently serve in a elected, well, one in elected and one in appointed capacity on boards zoning and then the Water Commission. I don't know if that complicates things through conflicts of interest. I don't think you're supposed to have kind of that kind of connection across boards. So that's just something to consider, for our board to consider.
Okay, well, go ahead.
So I guess it depends if there's a connection. So Nancy Calow is on zoning, and Tom, Thomas Calow is looking to go on inland wetlands, right? Then we've got Michelle Royce Williams is, is on water and sewer. And Ryan Williams is looking to get on inland wetlands. So what were you saying? Just so I, just wanted to make that clear.
What I'm saying is I just want us to make sure that there is no conflict of interest in whoever we appoint to the full seat and or to the alternate seat.
May I just ask what past practice has been? I mean, I'm certain that this must have come up in the past. Has there been anything?
No, this is unusual.
It is unusual?
Yes, it is.
Okay.
And I would like to suggest that we table this. This is not the usual procedure. Also, if it is a, if it's an elected board, then if one runs as an unaffiliated and they are on ballot for a specific party, then that counts as that, that party's seat in case of a vacancy. So we, I'm not questioning the competency of either one of these individuals, but I, I think that this is something that is an irregularity, and I have to be honest. I, I did, I did not see the second application. I just saw Mr. Calow's. So I, if this, if we're going to keep it on the agenda, I will abstain.
Sorry, Roseanne, could you repeat what you said originally? I couldn't quite grab what you said at the beginning.
I don't know what I said at the beginning.
You, you said something like if somebody is on, you, you have to look at who stepped down, is that what you said?
The affiliation.
If you're on an elected, if you're on an elected board, then, and you are an unaffiliated, but you ran on the Republican ticket, then you count as a Republican as far as filling, as far as filling a seat.
So both of these gentlemen have, as far as I know, have not run for any elected position in town.
I, you mean?
You're talking about Mr. Calow and Mr. Williams? They, they have not run for.
An elected.
An elected position. So there's not a ticket that's associated with them decides that Mr. Williams is a Democrat and Thomas Calow's unaffiliated.
Okay.
Just let me click. But yeah, maybe we should table this.
If, you know, there's a question, I think that would be wise.
Okay.
Can I ask what would be the next steps for this in terms of deciding? Like if we're going to table this, is it just going to come back and get us next meeting? Or is there something we can do in the meantime, reach out to these individuals, or?
What about legal representation? Is there, legally, right, we can?
So just talk to town attorneys? Okay.
Yeah, that's what I, that's what I think.
I would, I think if we can't do it by agreement, then we would have to seek an opinion.
Well, I understand what, I understand what Roseanne is saying. I mean, we really could, since it is something that is unusual.
Yeah.
We could be potentially setting precedents that may or may not be beneficial for our town.
No, I think that's a wise point. And so I'm in favor of tabling it. Do we need a motion to table it?
Yes.
Okay, so did you?
Okay, I'll, I'll move. Oh, sorry.
No, you go ahead.
Okay. I'll move to table the appointment to the inland wetlands for the alternate and the full member at this time.
Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
We have a second? Any further discussion?
I would suggest that this be placed on our next agenda.
Yeah, that should be.
Should it be noted that you're going to seek legal counsel on it, or no?
I, well, I think we should reserve that. We can decide afterwards what we're going to do. Why don't we see if there's an agreement and see what, see if we can figure out what the, if there is a precedent. Or we can, if we think there is, then we can always seek an opinion. But I don't want to say that we're going to on the record.
I see.
Until we know.
Well, that's the right of the first selectman anyway. The board does not have to vote on that. He may consult with an attorney at any time he feels it's necessary.
So the other thing I was only going to say is that I was on the inland wetlands before, and there's really no overlap between inland wetlands and zoning. It goes through inland wetlands and then it can go through zoning, but it's, it's, it's two, two separate, you know, entities. Water and sewer and inland wetlands are two separate entities also, so, but it's, you know.
But there's a question that's been raised, and I think it's, rather than rush it, I think.
Yeah, no, I agree, I agree.
We have the luxury of time a little bit here to, to figure this out in a way that is equitable.
Yeah.
And is the correct approach, so.
I think we have two candidates here that are qualified and have expressed an interest, and I think we should do our due diligence for both of them.
Yeah, I think that's right.
And I think this would set a precedent as how we're going to go do, do it going forward, so I agree.
I, I'd say that was a wise suggestion. So any further discussion? All in favor of tabling it, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right, that motion carries. So that item will be tabled. And let's see, I think we have some others.
Okay. Okay. Move to appoint Denise Hall of 23 Wesley, Nyannick, to serve as a member on the Pension Board on behalf of the Town of Eastline, with a term to expire on January 3rd, 2028.
Okay, do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Candace, thank you. Any discussion? Being none, those in favor, shall be saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Being none, the motion carries.
Move to appoint Peter Levanti, Sr., of 130 Boston Post Road, Number 35, Eastline, to serve as a member on the Pension Board on behalf of the Town of Eastline, with a term to expire on January 3rd, 2028.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Roseanne, thank you. Any discussion? Being none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Being none, the motion carries.
Move to appoint Conrad Seifert of 10 Wildwood Drive, Nyannick, to serve as a member on the Pension Board on behalf of the Town of Eastline, with a term to expire on January 3rd, 2028.
Do I hear a second?
A second.
Any discussion? All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay. So that closes new business. Do we have any ex officio reports? I'll start, you're on, Roseanne?
There have not been any meetings that have been since our last meeting. Zoning Commission will meet tomorrow night, and that's it.
Okay, Jason?
I met with the Stars to STEM Board of Directors, and they're a small new board. I don't know if it's really worth sharing, but they just got an agreement with the Board of Ed for a five-year contract. And they're receiving donations and looking to get up and running, and get some planetarium shows up at the high school very soon.
I was, you know, I had the privilege, any other ex officio?
That's it.
I had the privilege the other day of doing the balloon drop at the countdown, and they had the portable planetarium there. And it's, you know, it's a round thing, and it has a blower that plates it, and, and the cameras inside, the projectors inside. It's very impressive, and what a nice thing to have, to be able to bring to events, and.
It's going to be a real asset to our community, I think.
Yeah, I was quite impressed with it, and so, all right, that's great.
I think that that is a reminder that we should not have, after taxpayers have voted for a particular item and funded it, that one person should make the decision that that would be discontinued and dismantled. And I hope that never happens again.
Thank you. Any?
No, I haven't been with the library, inland wetlands, or water and sewer, so yeah, I don't have any.
Candace, anything?
There has not been any meetings.
Don?
Wellsco. Two things were subject, I wanted to think of opening shell fishing on the Black Point side of the Patagonia River and that area and stuff during the winter months. And, but our inspector says it's too risky. I'm not going to be going out there in a boat. And they just, well, let's just, let's leave it the way it is for now, because there's not going to be much usership anyway, based on how the scallop season ended. The count was very minimal at the end, almost non-existent. And the other item would be that I reported to them on what was going on at McCook's, and they were very impressed with the process and how expedient it was to be taken care of.
Yep.
That was it, it was a short meeting.
Thank you, Don.
Yeah.
And I, I have no ex officio reports tonight. But I do have, I do have a selectmen's report. So we've already, we've already talked a little bit about the C-Wall, we've mentioned it a couple of times. So I think everybody knows about that, and you can go down there and check it out, which it was impressive what they did, I got to say it. It is, it is like Legos, Legos for adults, right? Really is, and it's really great. You just don't want to step on them at night. Like, you ever do that with a real Lego? Ever step on a Lego?
Yeah, yeah.
You, yeah, you're great?
I think it's a rite of passage for parents.
Yeah, you gotta work on it to step on one of these Legos, so. Anyhow, that's that. But I do have something a bit more serious, and I want to address it here. And this is in the interest of full disclosure and information that we want to make sure that all the citizens in town are aware of. You may recall, a few weeks ago, we talked about PFAS litigation and how there was some pending litigation suing manufacturers of, what they call PFAS, which is really two different chemicals. And we opted out of that litigation, and we did it for a reason, because it was, it seemed to be, and I think it was the correct thinking, cannot be limited on if we ever have to sue the manufacturers of those, those products. And in, in the interest of being careful and being forward-thinking, the water and sewer, they tested for PFAS at our wells. And we have seven well sites, and of the seven well sites, there were detectable levels. And we have seven well sites, and of the seven well sites, there were detectable levels of PFAS in two of those wells. We just found this out. We had to take cer- certain measures to alert in a certain sequence. We went to the Board of the Water and Sewer, which I am also the chairman, and we wanted to let them know immediately. As soon as we found this information out, we scheduled a special meeting so that we could bring them up to speed, which we did. The next step was to alert the City of New London. We have a water trading agreement with the City of New London. It was important that we bring them in and let them know. We scheduled a meeting, we had that meeting today with the chairman. I met with the chairman of, of the water system in New London and their water director. And we explained to them the situation, because we send water to New London, and we wanted them to be aware that there is this potential for detected PFAS. They're very appreciative of us being right on top of it and letting them know. The next step was to let the public in East Line know, and that's what we're doing today. We did it by mail, we did it by putting the information on our website, and we also disclosed it to the reporter at the New London Day. We wanted to be sure that as soon as we had this information, the public was aware of it. I'm not going to get into, I'm not a scientist. I've learned a lot in the last couple of weeks. I've tried to educate myself more and more about PFAS, what we can do about it. It's in our environment everywhere. You know, I've got a water bottle here, there's probably, good probability there's PFAS on the internet, and now it's all over my notes. But it's, it's, it's a forever chemical. You know, it's in raincoats, it's in tinfoil, so it's in a lot of places, and of course, the idea is the less you're exposed to it, the better. We are in the business of abiding by the regulations, not setting the regulations, so we are going to investigate what steps and what measures we can take to make sure that we're in compliance with standards as they are handed down. This is still, still a new area, even for the DE, for EPA and Department of Public Health, they still don't know what limits they want to establish. There are limits right now. We are, as I say, in those two areas, we're above the detectable limit, but we're below what we call the action limit. But we want to be ahead of the game, so we wanted to disclose as soon as we knew. That's what we're doing tonight. I encourage everyone to read, there's a lot of information that we've put out there, and I don't want to recite that information, because I might get it wrong. But I want to make people aware of it. We're going to take all necessary steps. I don't want people to be fearful. That's why we're coming out tonight. We're going to do everything that we need to do to keep our sea, our water safe, and our, the people living in this town, keep them safe. That's our first mission, and we're going to meet that challenge, and we'll do it, and we're going to figure out the right way to do it. So I want everybody to be assured that that's what we're going to do. So that's my report on that issue, and I encourage you, go to the website, you might be seeing something in the mail, and you may see something in the newspaper. So I don't want anyone to be surprised, but we're on top of it, and we're going to do our very best to do what we, we should do. So, that's my report on that. I don't have any communications. Are there any communications that anyone is aware of? Is there any public comment? Being none, I don't have a response. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn the, the meeting of January third, twenty twenty-four.
Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
At seven forty-five, sorry.
No. Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Close. Stand adjourned. Thank you.